Ed, you want to let them know we'll get going in the morning?
Yeah, yeah, are you ready?
Yep.
What?
Okay, I'm gonna call the order of this meeting of the Nashua City Planning Board of June 6, 2019. Mr. Secretary, can you call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Donches. Mike Peterson.
Present.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Varley. Ed Weber. Here. Alderman David Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Mary Ann Mozila-Goya.
Present.
Steve DuCrane. Dave Robbins.
Here.
Jerry Rapucci. Maggie Harper.
Here.
Okay, so we have enough folks for a quorum here. We have in front of us the minutes from both May 19 and May 16. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at those minutes and want to make a motion as to whether they're acceptable as written? Go ahead.
Yes, first for the record, I am not voting because I'm here as the alternate.
Yep.
But for the May 9 annual training session, if the records could just reflect, I joined the group at 8:30.
Okay.
Please.
For the May 9th?
Yes, for the training session.
Whoever makes that motion, maybe can add that. Any motions on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written with the exception of adding Alderman Mary Ann Mozila-Goya that she came in at 8:30 PM.
Okay, so I'll just note that Mr. DuCrane joined us here. So Ed, do you want to pick that up on the roll? Got it? Okay. All right, so we have a motion to accept the May 9 minutes as amended by Ms. Harper. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Any other further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
You know, I wasn't here last week, so I abstained.
Were you here on the 9th?
No.
Okay, so yeah, it'd be three abstentions, if that makes sense.
It has you listed as being here on the 9th.
Oh yeah, it does.
Oh, which 9th?
May 9th.
I can say I was here.
Hey, you were there then.
Construction control.
Yeah, so you can vote yes if you want. All right.
He stepped through it.
Let's just make sure we got the right number, so.
503.
You got it? Three abstentions, okay. Now we need the May 16 planning board meeting. Anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion as to whether they're acceptable as written?
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Mr. Robbins. Any second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None? And then any abstentions from the one? Okay. Got that, Ed? Alderman Tenza. Okay, so that motion passes. All right, communications? Anything, Ed, from the committees?
No, we had none.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. Roger? That's good. All right, great. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead. Is there anybody here that's not an applicant or representing the applicant? Okay, you're here, all right. So I'm gonna go ahead and read through the procedure of the meetings and hearings. What's that?
Waiver plan.
Yeah, I can't really wave it if it's in there, so. So, all right, the procedure of the meeting and hearings is follows. So after each legal notice or of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision is read by myself, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations. The board will then have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. The chair will then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This is their time to express concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, I'll ask for testimony from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant, and the applicant will be given a rebuttal period at which time they shall respond to any concerns raised by the public testimony. If so needed, one public member will be allowed to respond only to those items brought forth during the applicant rebuttal period. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end and the board will resume the public meeting, at which time the board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks as subject in hand and not to repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I thank everybody for their interest and courteous attention, and if you do have a cell phone, if you could put it on silence or vibrate at this time. Okay. Old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plans, case number one, City of Nashua. Application and acceptance of proposed two-lot subdivision. This property is located at 141 to 143 Burke Street, Ward 7. Do I have a motion, or do I have a motion from the board that this application for item number one is ready for us to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
So we have a motion to accept jurisdiction by Mr. Peterson's. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay, do we have someone from the city? All right.
Good evening. Sarah Marchant, Community Development Director, representing the city tonight in this subdivision. I'm here to present to you a subdivision of city-owned property off of Burke Street. The total lot is a little over 29 acres. The proposal is to subdivide it into two pieces, a smaller lot, new lot of two and a half acres, which the city is proposing to retain, and a remainder 27-acre lot that will stay with the larger facility. The smaller lot is to be retained as part of future wastewater treatment plant expansion area or future needs uses. That area has a use restriction on it associated with the wastewater treatment plant already, and so we're trying to keep these pieces together. There are no improvements whatsoever planned on the lot at this time. It is simply a subdivision. There are no additional impacts to wetlands, stormwater, parking, anything like that. As part of your packet, you will see the fire department requested an easement if this was, if their access point was going to be impacted off of, oh, I can't see the name of the street right there.
Sawmill.
Sawmill. Thank you. Sawmill. Thank you. And at this time, the cities, the land that the city will be retaining will include the other side of that gate and that access, and so there is no need to grant an easement, nor can we grant an easement to ourselves. But we will be retaining the rights to either side of that. The other big piece of this is that we are proposing a conservation easement over the pond and the northwest piece of land. The goal there is to retain in perpetuity the ability for public access to Salmon Brook and the addition, the existing walkways and pathways to the northwest of the property. And in the future, we do hope we can connect some of that back to Salmon Brook. The last piece is, as part of the application, we are requesting a waiver from showing existing conditions within 1,000 feet of the property line. This is a giant property. It is very built out in this area. We do have records of the whole area, and it would be a very considerable expense to the city to show this, and since we are not proposing any new improvements or development, it would be a considerable cost burden.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Mr. Weber?
Does the conservation have any plans, what they're gonna do with it?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Anybody from the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Come on up.
Just very quick, quick doubt. I'm Alderman from Ward 2, Ada Scott Park, Nashua. The reason that we originally purchased this property was to secure this land for the wastewater treatment plant expansion, and I'm definitely in favor of approving the subdivision.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else? Hearing none. Any final questions for the applicant from the board at this time during the hearing? Okay, I think we're all set. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you very much.
So any further questions for staff before I close the hearing? Okay, at this time, I'll close the hearing on new business number one and move into the meeting. All right, so we have just a subdivision in front of us, city, city land on each side. I guess with regard to staff's question on the stipulation regarding the fire department's easement request, are you concurrent that we don't need that stipulation at this point, or we don't? I mean, the stipulation is essentially recommending that all the comments on the email from the fire department be incorporated, right? So it'll be addressed, which would include the easement. So would you recommend we not include that anymore?
You can just leave it as written, because that includes.
I would think that would be fine, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't seem to impact it, because.
Yeah, when they draw the easement, they'll work with the fire department to make sure that they're satisfied.
Yeah, I think there was a question about whether we need the, because it's city on city, basically, right?
Right.
If it were ever to sell, then the easement would need to kick in if they still wanted to keep that excessive.
Right, we can't do an easement at this time to ourselves. We can't do an easement to ourselves.
Right.
So if it's ever sold at that time, the easement would be created. But they're gonna work on that internally. And stipulation number, I think it's three, references the fire Marcus comments, and that's included in his email about the easement.
Okay.
So you don't have to have another stipulation unless the board wants to.
Yeah, I guess my question is, it looks like the email isn't indicating that the easement would be at the time of the city selling. It just says essentially, we want an easement, so should we?
Well, right now, we own both lots.
Right.
We can't do an easement to ourselves.
Right.
So if it's ever sold at that time, then the easement would be created if it's conveyed to another party.
Right.
Just a suggestion.
That's kind of, I understand that, I guess, but I'm just wondering if our, if the fire department understands that.
Yes, they do. We discussed that with them and we explained it to them that we couldn't create an easement at this time.
All right, so they understand that.
Yes.
All right, I'm clear now, okay. Any other discussion items during the meeting here? Okay. At this time, I'd, does anybody want to make a motion on this new business item number one? And I would indicate which way on the waiver as well if you so choose. Any motions? Alderman Tenza?
Thank you. Sure, I'll make a motion for a site plan, new business number one, City of Nashua. It says 131 Burke Street. But the planning board made a determination that the plan meets other requirements as outlined in Site Plan NRO Section 190-146D in that the planning board recommends the request for a waiver of Section 190-282B9, which requires physical features on-site within 1,000 feet, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations, as well as stipulations 2 through 4 as outlined in the new business number one subdivision.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve new business number one subdivision as stated by Alderman Tenza. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay, thanks. Yep. Okay, next up. New business subdivision plan, case number two, Brian and Annalisa Law, owners. Application and acceptance of proposed lot line relocation. Property is located at 27 Webster Street and 78 Concord Street, Ward 3. Do I have a motion as to whether this application is ready for us to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
A motion to take jurisdiction by Ms. Harper? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robbins. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes? Okay. Mr. Maynard, it's yours.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Richard Maynard, professional engineer. I represent the applicants and property owners, Brian and Annalisa Law, with regard to properties at 78 Concord Street and 27 Webster Street. Properties are also known as Sheet 65, Lots 98 and 125, both located in the IRA zone. The proposal is to relocate the rear lot line of both properties. The Concord Street property would increase in size from 31,698 square feet to 49,848 square feet. The Webster Street lot would go from 33,187 to 15,037 square feet in lot area. The Webster Street lot would still be large than just about every other lot on Webster Street. No changes or any new construction are proposed. Engineering, planning, and zoning have all expressed no concerns, no comments with regard to this particular plan. A waiver of the existing conditions plan has been requested. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant by the board? Mr. Weber?
What is the purpose?
To acquire land and have a bigger backyard.
That's it?
That's it.
Just want a bigger backyard?
Bigger backyard.
So I can make a hockey rink, maybe?
I don't think so right now. The kids aren't old enough, but maybe later.
Okay. Alderman Mozila-Goya?
Yes, thank you. In the future, because we know people move and sell property, is the larger lot that's being proposed large enough that it could be subdivided?
Not easily, because there's no easy access for frontage. So there's no, in order to subdivide that someday in the future for a building lot, you'd probably have to get a variance, and it's unlikely because the Concord Street lot is in the historic district zone. So that's highly unlikely that would happen.
Okay. But if someone chose to apply for a variance, would the lot size be such that someone could then say it's large enough to subdivide and we could apply for a variance?
Yeah, because the lot sizes in that zone are only 7,500 square feet. However, there are all kinds of variances you can apply for theoretically, but your question is very speculative and highly unlikely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions of the applicant?
Quick note here, Mr. Maynard.
Yep?
Mr. Maynard, the lot size you mentioned for the large lot is what? You said, I think I heard you said 49?
The large site goes from 31,000 to 49,000.
Okay, so that must be an error in our plan. Here it says 48,000.
Well, then I, it's an error in my speech. I can't read the plan.
Yeah, it's, I think it says 48, 848 or something? Is that the one?
I wrote it darn wrong in my notes, so. Whatever it says on the plan is what it is. I'm sorry, okay.
Note 7 has it as 49,848, so.
Oh, okay.
One is, one must be wrong.
So you're saying the note doesn't match what's written on the drawing?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Forget what I say, it's what's on the drawing.
I can't read it.
There's a note next to the drawing, different numbers.
I can't read the plan myself, so. I'm not sure.
You all need magnifying glass.
I know. I have to go up and read the plan on the wall. I can't see them either.
I think it says 49.
What is it? 49848?
Yeah.
On the notes.
On the notes.
Still plenty.
So, I mean, we could, that's probably be a plan clarification. We could just put that.
Yeah, maybe minor drafting errors.
Yes.
Okay. So maybe if someone makes a motion later on, you can put a clarification there.
That's always a stipulation for fixed drafting errors.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? No? Any further questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna close the hearing, move into the meeting. Okay, so we have a lot line relocation as the applicant described. It looks like there might be a discrepancy between the notes and the plan thing. So if you are making a motion on this, I would recommend that there just be a stipulation that indicates the, I mean, there actually is, number two has prior.
Yeah, that should take care of it.
But you might want to say including, or, you know, the square footage of the new lot, you know, so. Any other discussions? Mr. Peterson?
Probably like a transcription error. One says 49 dot dot dot, the other says 48 dot dot dot. Like somebody got the number wrong by one.
Yeah.
So just a correction needs to be made.
Right.
Just have to figure out which way to correct it.
Yeah, agreed. Anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion on this point? Subdivision. Anyone? Yeah. I'm gonna call it subdivision. Anybody? Mr. Weber?
New business subdivision plan, 27 Webster Street and 78 Concord Street. Brian H. Law, Anesthesia, B. Law. That it meets NRO 190, 138G. The requests were waiver 190, 282B9, which requires existing condition plans is granted, finding the waiver will not be contrary to spirit and intent of the regulation. And prior to the chair sending the board, all minor draft corrections will be made, including corrections on square footage of lots.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with the stipulations as indicated by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tenza. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks. Okay, moving on with our agenda here. New business site plans, case number three. That case is postponed to September 12th at this point. Other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. So we have some technical review meeting, May 20. Items in front of us, has anybody had a chance to take a look at these that are in your packet and indicate whether or not they have potential for regional impact? Thoughts?
Doesn't appear that there's any. I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Weber? Is that a motion, Mr. Weber?
A motion that there is, a tentative agreement, there is no regional impact.
So we have a motion that there are no proposals of regional impact. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robbins. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay. Other business, case number two, referral from the board of Alderman on proposed O-19-0146, authorizing the granting of easements to Penachuck Water Works for the construction utilization and maintenance of water lines. Roger, you're gonna speak to that, or? Okay.
Staff has revealed the easement, and I'll show the board the name.
Yep. Want to grab the mic, Roger?
It's located from approximately Domain Avenue. This is Round Pond, Amherst Street here.
Yep.
To the end of this lot here, which is where the, uh...
Exist, the northwest development, AMC, there's that packaging company that's in that existing building. It sticks, basically just extends the water line to that location.
To that location?
The city actually owns these parcels as part of their here.
Okay. So we're basically just putting an easement through there to extend the water line?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Is that map, put it up to everyone?
Yeah, I can see it. Any questions to the board regarding this easement? Or this, so this is a referral, so if we, you know, essentially we're making a recommendation for, you know, a positive recommendation towards the, for this or not, this legislation? Questions? Alderman Tenza?
Thank you. If I just may ask a question. Do you know how, how does that property obtain its water right now? Or is it new development that they're trying to reach?
I don't know the exact answer, because they don't have, they probably get it off of Northwestern Boulevard, and I think they're looping it back through. The water line may already be there. This may just be clearing up an easement issue. I'm not sure. I haven't been involved with the legal department on this. I did check the easement. There was something, and perhaps maybe Engineer DuCrane can enlighten me on, they referred to, instead of iron pins or markers, cotton gin stakes. Do you, can you, do you know what a cotton gin stake is?
I know what gin is. No, I saw it myself, and I was like, I need it.
I just wondered if you've come across that term. The surveyor had mentioned that a couple of times in the legal description.
I meant to look it up if I came to the meeting, but I didn't get a chance.
Okay, so we're still perplexed. That's tonight's trivia question.
I can Google that if you'd like.
That's okay. I'm good. All right, so having heard that, is anybody willing to make a motion as to positive referral or not?
I'll make a motion.
Alderman Tenza?
That the planning board recommends passage of R-19, I'm sorry, yeah, R-19146.
Okay, so we have a positive referral recommendation on 0-19-0146 from Alderman Tenza. Do we have a second on it? Anybody?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, so we have one more item on the agenda, and it's another referral from the Board of Alderman. It's, but it's amending the zoning map by rezoning 610 Amherst Street from Park Industrial to General Business. Do we have somebody in staff who can speak to that one? Roger? This is on the rezoning of 610 Amherst Street, is, can you?
Yes, I can. I know Alderman Dowd is here.
Okay.
He's award Alderman for the area would like to address this rezoning. It's, it's a specific area. It's Chili's, former Chili's Restaurant site.
Yep.
Rest of the zone in that neighborhood, with the exception of the Shell Station is owned as General Business.
Yeah.
One of the things I'd like to add to that, I noticed reviewing the legal description given to the city, doesn't go to the center line of the street. Typically, the leads and bounds descriptions or the description goes to the center of the street. This one goes to the southerly side of Amherst Street. So, I'd like to, you know, the board could recommend favorably, making sure that the legal description is, is correct, and you can work the legal to-
Mm-hmm. So, you'd say something like, recommend with, that the wording be revised to indicate the legal description of the, the, what would you, what term?
Legal description of the zoning.
Of the zoning.
There's an east and bounds.
Right. Of the zoning is to the center of the street. Questions for staff or anybody else regarding this particular referral? Case number three. Anybody willing to make a motion regarding this referral? And I kinda indicate, reminded that we have staff's recommendation that we refer that, or recommend that there be adjustments to the language for the legal description of zoning to be to the center of the street.
So moved.
Okay, so Mr. Peterson makes that motion to, that's a positive referral?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Mr. Peterson for a positive referral with indication that we are also recommending that the legal description of zoning be indicated to the center of the street. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robbins. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so we're good with that. Discussion items, we don't have any specifically listed. I think, Roger, you wanted to say something about potential next training workshop?
We're looking at the dates. We got the room reserved for August 22nd, Room 208 for the workshop training session. If anyone has any topic ideas, please forward them on to me and the chair, and we'll kind of windle those down, make sure that we have enough time to discuss what we're, we want to, what all the members would like to discuss. We had a few topics in the last work session that we can carry forward on.
Yeah, we recorded those. If it's helpful, maybe we can, we could send those topics to the board, right? Right now?
Yeah, I could.
Yeah, just so you remind us, so you don't regurgitate the same topic that's already on the list, because I don't remember them all off the top of my head. Mr. Weber?
Yes, um, one thing that, a couple of meetings ago, I requested that we would have, when we make certain motions, and that they could be on one of these sheets, maybe we wanna discuss it in the workshop, what motions would be that we usually make and how to make it, so it's easier.
Common motion language, basically?
Yes, common motion, that's, maybe it's not on, whatever's there, the, each of the, our sheets that come out, they, we have to refer and make something else, we add to it, and maybe the right way to put that out, as far as before the chairman signs it or, you know, prior to occupancy, or something like that. If we have a motion that we usually would make, but it's not on here because we need to make a stipulation, so it's easier for board members to follow and just write that out, it's, I mean, to say that.
Are you thinking like general guidance on, for certain types of stipulations, when they should be enacted, i.e., you know, at time of building permit, at time of-
Exactly, exactly.
Certificate of occupancy?
And if we can discuss that at the workshop, maybe we can set it up, because there's many times that I'm writing something out to put in the motion, and, and how should I do it correctly, and, you know?
Okay. Maybe it's just a general discussion on what, what are appropriate things to happen at the time of building permit, and what are appropriate at time of certificate of occupancy?
And if we, you know, maybe we can put some of the, our common-
Yeah.
-to help board members, if you're wanting to make a motion, you can just follow this.
Yeah.
Right now, you can do it on the staff report.
Right.
You know, the language gives the right sections for each of-
Yeah.
Whether it's a conditional use permit, or a site plan, or a subdivision.
Yeah.
Or a special use, which none of you have seen so far.
Right, right. Okay, so, that's reasonable. Alderman?
Yes, just in, in reference to the training that happened on May 9th regarding sidewalks, the Planning and Economic Development Committee received the memo from the planning board dated May 14th, and we discussed it at our last PEDC meeting. Out of that meeting came a desire to continue a discussion around sidewalks, and we are scheduling a meeting for July 16th with Director Marchand to further talk about your questions related to sidewalks and, and the bigger issue. And we would like to invite you to come and participate in that discussion. The committee thought it would be helpful to have you there, so we could hear your questions and have shared information at one time among all of us. So, the PEDC meeting will be Tuesday, July 16th at 7:00 PM, and it will be in the chamber, and you are all invited.
All right.
Maybe staff could send out-
So, it's on the 16th, 7:00 PM.
July 16th, which is a Tuesday, 7:00 PM.
Maybe staff could send out, kinda like you did a reminder for the board meeting, just that.
We'll have to notice it too, because you'll have, you might have form.
We will, the board, the Alderman, our administrator, Ms. Levering, will notice it as a PEDC meeting, and then we will state that we expect there may be a majority of the planning board there. We will not notice it as a joint meeting, because if we don't have form of the planning board, we can't hold our meeting. So, it will be noticed with the expectation that there may be a majority of your board there. Okay.
Okay, great. Any other discussion items? Okay, anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn? Mr. Robbins?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn, if I may.
Is it a final motion to adjourn?
My final motion to adjourn, my final moments on the planning board.
All right. So, we have a final motion to adjourn by Mr. Robbins.
Before you, before you approve that, just thank you for all your service.
Yes, thank you very much.
It has been appreciated.
On the record, very much.
Thank you.
We came on at the same time, Dave, and Dave and I, so it's been a while.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Reporting staff.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Have fun down in Florida, too.
This is-
Yeah, you're ready.
You can send us postcards in the wintertime, in the dead of winter.
As they said of Richard Nixon, tanned, rested, and ready.
All right. So, we have that motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, the meeting is adjourned at 7:39.